Other than people.
People, which I don't blame on. Because full time is one year's spending, 20 minutes. I'd say it's very important.
That's a shout.
Um, the mother of the school. On Jen, painting and says, oh. And also, oh, Jen and super. And then she's all around those four right here in front, right in time with Chito Mio. There's Coram, I'm up. Yeah.
Did you get it?
You guys are not.
Got some.
What town tables? Mine is small, take that table. All right. Go for the each.
A quorum being present, the second half of the annual town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby? Select Board Chairwoman Ms. Dufresne will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And we live in a country that stands one nation under God, in the midst of what liberty and justice are.
Sitting in front tonight are the Finance Board, the Town Clerk behind me, the Town Attorney, Town Administrator, and your Select Board. The School Committee is sitting in the front row. Tonight, we are handling questions and comments a little differently from last meeting. As usual, however, you need to raise your hand, and when I recognize you, everybody needs to come to the front mics right here to ask their question or discuss the motion. Before you speak, please state your name and your address. If you cannot come to the mics, we will have a mic runner come to you if necessary. Please do not direct a comment or a question to a particular member at town meeting. Direct a discussion and questions to me, and I will direct them to the appropriate person. I will warn you if this occurs, and if it occurs more than once, you will not be allowed to speak at town meeting. In your handouts, you have the Finance Committee and Capital Improvement Report, in which you're going to find the warrant articles, as well as an explanation of each of the articles. The guide to the Granby Town Meeting, which talks to you about town meeting procedure, as well as an amendment worksheet for those of you that would like to propose an amendment. If you plan on amending a motion on the floor, you must have the amendment in writing before you propose the amendment. If you do not have it in writing, I will not entertain the amendment until it's done. And lastly, non-residents and non-voters must sit in the designated area to the right, or your left. The moderator will now recognize Select Board Chairman Ms. Dufresne to speak.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for coming out tonight. To start, I just want to give a brief overview of what the Select Board is and does. The Granby Select Board consists of three selectmen that serve part-time. The Select Board is the chief executive branch of local government in the open town meeting form of government. The Select Board's basic function consists of calling town meetings, proposing budgets to the town meeting, setting public policy, calling elections, licensing, setting certain fees, overseeing certain volunteer and appointed bodies, and creating basic regulations. The selectmen's daily administrative duties are delegated to a full-time town administrator. Granby's town administrator is Krista Martin. Our town administrator oversees every committee or town department in town. This is unlike other towns and a lot of responsibility. For example, other towns have a Director of the Board of Health, we don't. Other towns have a Director of Conservation, we don't. Other towns have a Grant Writer, we don't. Human Resources, we don't. You get the picture. I can keep on going, as I'm sure I'm missing a few. So with that said, I think we need to take into perspective everything that we have done this past year. If you, the townspeople, are not happy with the progress that we have, we need to look at some of these positions and move forward. This is way too much to put on one person, and when Mr. Martin does leave, it will be near impossible to find someone to say yes to do all these duties. With that said, let me give you a recap of what we have done to date, starting in 2022 until now. In July of 2022, Dufresne's Park Playground was inspected, and due to safety concerns, the playground was closed. After a special town meeting, the town allocated the funds to fix and update the park, and it was completed in December of 2023. In September of 2023, TRC Environmental completed a dredge feasibility analysis for the Dufresne Pond. This study took into account the goal for the town's restoration of the pond, and the analysis determined that if dredging is not done, then Dufresne Pond, as we know it, will become wetlands. The estimated cost of dredging the pond is approximately $1.25 million. The board has reached out to Representative Mindy Dom and Dan Carey, and they have both, they are both looking into next steps in connecting Granby with state resources that may be available to help us in the future. The board will continue to seek grants to help in this restoration project. Last year, Piner Valley Planning Commission awarded us a DLTA grant for $10,000 to update our open space and recreation plan, which was last updated in 2012. The Open Space and Recreation Committee was appointed, and the committee has met four times to work with Piner Valley Planning Commission to update this plan and to develop a survey. The Select Board then applied for a DLTA grant in December of 2023 to complete the open space and recreation plan. In February, we were awarded $12,500 to be dedicated to supporting Piner Valley Planning Commission staff and working with our community to complete the plan. The Open Space and Recreation Plan is a tool through which a community plans for the future of its conservation and recreation resources. As you visit Brown Ellison, Dufresne Park, Bachelor Brook, Trailhead, Sand Plains off of Green Meadow Lane, Cooley Field off of Burnett Road, East Metal School, and Granby Junior Senior High School, please stop when you see one of these signs and scan the QR code to take the survey. So we can't get any grants unless you guys take the survey and we know what the community needs. So all you have to do is put your camera up to this, scan the QR code, and it will bring you straight to the survey, and you can fill it out. So just wanted to bring that up. All right, so we need public participation so that we have an accurate reflection of the needs of our community and its members. In September, the Open Space and Recreation Committee will be planning a public participation meeting at the Granby Free Public Library. We'll keep you informed by using the town website. The Police Chief and the Fire Chief are really good about posting it on their Facebook page and website, and we'll also have a flyer around town buildings. Once the plan is complete, it will be reviewed, and once approved by the Commonwealth, it will allow Granby to become eligible for future grants through DCS or the Division of Conservation for up to seven years. So it's very important that we fill that out. In January 2023, David Leonard from Leonard Consulting Services LLC in Chickvii offered to help the town in filing for a grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to provide financial assistance by means of a grant in the amount of $75,000 to the town of Granby to complete the necessary design work and filing of permits needed to repair the Forge Pond Dam and Dyke. This is a very competitive grant, and with David Leonard's assistance, the town was awarded this grant in July of 2023. Currently, Mr. Leonard is on track with the project, and he will have all the work done by June 30th, 2024. He is going to keep the board apprised of any grants to complete the construction phase of this restoration project for this fiscal year, but the grant has not been opened yet. In March of 2023, the Select Board looked into the Community One Stop for Growth Grant Program. The expression of interest for a grant was submitted in February of 2023, and the full grant application is usually due in the beginning of June. Last year, the Select Board and Town Administrator filled out the expression of interest for a community center municipal building project and an expression of interest for water and sewer for the town. This year, the Board and the Town Administrator submitted an expression of interest for water and sewer for the town again. The Board needs to complete some work on this project before we are ready to fill out the full application. In 2019, the town's Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness 1.0 Plan was completed, and this made Granby eligible to apply for action grants, provided that these action grants tied back to items addressed in the original plan. For the past two years, we have filed for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness 2.0 Grant, which would help us help fund and update our plan, but we were told that we need to wait till 2025 to 2026 in order for us to apply for this grant. Couple more, guys, we've done actually quite a bit. In August of 2022, a group of concerned citizens came to the Select Board meeting to voice their concerns about West Street School's future use. In October of 2022, the Select Board appointed seven people to the committee, and they tasked the committee with going to the various departments to find out the amount of space needed for each department. The committee currently has eight members, and they have collected data from various companies. They have had a public informational meeting, and at the special town meeting, monies were allocated for the projects. Tomorrow, the tank, or sorry, excuse me. Tomorrow, the top of the oil tank will be cleaned and uncovered, and on Thursday or Friday, the tank will be removed, weather permitting. Once the tank is removed, soil samples will be taken and analyzed to ensure the tank has not leaked into the surrounding soil. On June 7th, the Select Board and the Town Administrator received an email from Chris Mason from the Department of Energy, and he sent us some grant opportunities through the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grants. The West Street Building Committee was then forwarded this email, and the West Street Building Committee, the Town Administrator, and the Select Board will be looking at these grants moving forward. Even though we are addressing all these projects and needs for the town, we have also held interviews and hired a new Building Commissioner, Damian Cody, and a new Council on Aging Director, Natalie Archambault. The Board takes pride in hiring people who genuinely want to help and serve the people of Granby. Our expectation is that everyone who has had any interactions with our town employees has been treated respectfully and kindly by any and all town employees. In December of 2022, the Select Board began looking into developing a senior work-off program to help the senior citizens of Granby get abatements on their taxes. The senior citizen work-off program should be available in the next couple of months as we finalize our forms and procedures. And we did not forget about the recall bylaw. Currently, that is still at the legislature level, and we are waiting for approval for the open, for the, sorry, for the recall bylaw as of right now. The Select Board as a group has not developed any town goals for this year as of yet, but in the future, we, I believe, sorry, I don't want to speak on the other board, that we need to do a couple of things. One, set goals for the town of Granby for the fiscal year 2025. Two, to secure a new town accountant, as we have that posted currently. Three, establish a municipal water supply by working with local districts and the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. Three, to secure a grant writer to help the various grants that are out there and to stay on top of the needs for Granby. Five, to complete the West Street Building Project and relocate our town offices into one building. Six, to dredge the Dufresne Pond and restore the pond before it becomes a wetland. Seven, to secure grants to update our open space and recreation areas to fit the needs of our community. And eight, updating our town website to be more user-friendly and to have all the updated minutes and documents for each committee. I know there are other issues that we need to work on as a board, but these are the most pressing issues moving forward. We, as the Select Board, will do our best to uphold the bylaws of the town and to follow all Massachusetts general laws and regulations and any decisions we make moving forward. Lastly, I would like to mention that Facebook is not an official town website or a form of town communication. Messages are posted on the official town website, and if anyone in the town has a complaint or a concern, please come into the Select Board's office or call them to submit a formal complaint or concern in writing. It can also be sent via email if that is easier for you. We, the Select Board, cannot take any action if we do not have a formal written complaint in front of us. I thank you for your time and for being here tonight and for representing your town. Thank you.
The moderator now called for a motion to recess the annual town meeting and call to order the special town meeting. Can I have a second? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? So a quorum being present, the special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby? So the moderator will now recognize Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 1.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the Snow and Ice Department Personal Services Budget, $54,454, and the Snow and Ice Department Expense Budget, $60,000, for a total of $114,454. For the purpose of funding, $100,636. For the Fire Department Personal Services Budget, $4,816. For the Fire Department Expense Budget, $9,002. For the Fire Department Capital Budget for fiscal year 2024.
Second, and discussion.
This is to fund the Fire Department for fiscal year 2024 being over budget.
So Chief O'Neill would like to speak. In order to have Chief O'Neill to speak, I need a motion to allow that. And a second? And a majority from the town members, so all in favor? Thank you. Come on up, Chief O'Neill.
Face you. Good evening, my name is Fire Chief Mike O'Neill. I would like to take a moment to explain the overages. I want to emphasize that the request for additional funding to the town has not been taken lightly whatsoever, especially when I know the town has a multitude of financial obligations to address at this time. I intend to use this time to have you understand why we are over. We have gone back to research budgets from fiscal year 2015 to date and have seen a trend of fluctuating budgets during times of chief transitions. This has resulted in fluctuating budgets that has increased or decreased in and without any apparent or justifiable reason other than new chiefs having lack of transition or understanding of the budget shortfalls from the past administration. Every year for the past seven years, the department has come back to some special town meeting for overages in their budget. When I was appointed in May of 2022, the department was already in deficit. Further, the 2023 budget was already submitted by the previous department head. In the budget year 22 and 23, I had no involvement with the creating or proposing of a budget, and unfortunately, those fiscal years ended up being underfunded. For 2024, I was advised to give a budget proposal increase no more than 3%. Unfortunately, I had to add more than 3% to certain lines to account for budget deficits from previous year, the previous year, also to meet contractual obligations. The budget was presented for approval, I was not asked any questions, no red flags were raised. We have been playing catch-up for the past three budgets due to underfunding in years past. I have tried to take a slowly building process and approach to not shell-shock the taxpayers. When I was hired in May of 2022, the primary concerns of the Select Board were to ensure the ambulance remains staffed and operational 24/7 at the appropriate paramedic level and to ensure that the Fire Department could handle the increased call volume. These standards have to be met in order to receive grants and to keep our current insurance rating. That has been forefront of my focus and is what we are providing for the town at this, to this point. From '21 to '23, our call volumes went to six, from 680 calls to nearly 1,300 calls. These calls are answered by a combination of full-time, part-time firefighter, paramedics, firefighter EMTs, and call firefighters. We have professional and experienced group of responders that afford us the ability to safely and successfully navigate adversarial way of emergencies that occur in this town. A little bit of facts. During the period of 2019 to 2022, over three years, which is 1,095 days, the ambulance was out of service 180 days, meaning no coverage for the town. At the basic life support level for 320 days, at the normal state-required advanced life support level, 595 days. Since July of '22, we, July of '22, we have not been out of service at all to the town. We have went to the BLS level only 24 times out of dire need, and 1,071 days, we've been staffed at the advanced life support level. The overages you see in this year's budget are a result of responding to rules and regulations set forth by the. We, July of '22, we have not the Fire Department how to operate, and we must adhere to them in order to increase the safety for firefighters and the people we serve. There has also been overseeing overages, a perfect storm, if you will, and will likely not occur again. For example, two full-timers taking family medical leave in the same budget year and one firefighter being injured on duty. Also having members per contractual agreements needing to go to the Mass Fire Academy for firefighter training. We also, with the approval of the Town Administrator, hired a provisional position to help offset the costs of overtime for the shifts the injured firefighter would be up for. We, as a department, have made every effort to be completely transparent with the town and residents. We make a significant effort to inform the public of active incidents, departmental trainings, other significant events and activities within our department. We have a structural problem with the Fire Department EMS budgets. There are two separate budgets on paper but are intertwined at the working level. We know that we have work to do in order to get our budgets increased for future fiscal years while also maintaining excellent service to the town. With that, we hope to create a dialogue where we may ask, you may ask questions directly to us, so you can, we can provide you the accurate and factual answers to become, to better come to actionable solutions. Thank you for allowing me this time, and I'm happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Is this on? Which one, my con? Okay. I'm John Libero speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee. Articles 1 and 2 seemingly ask for permission to transfer some funds to cover very large over expenditure in the Fire and Ambulance Department budgets. The Finance Committee is here to tell you that it makes no financial difference at all whether you vote yes, no, abstain, or just call it a night and go home. The money has and will be spent, and the over expenditure will be covered. Two years ago, the over expenditure was about $58,000. Last year, the over expenditure was about $96,000. This year, the over expenditure is about $196,000. The bedrock of municipal finance is the budget process and adherence to the appropriated amounts. The committee investigated this deficit issue as best it could, given its limited authority. We were told that there had been no communication between the Fire Chief and the Select Board regarding deficit, not even through the liaison process. While the authority of the chief is strong under the strong chief law, the authority does not extend to the budget. Town meeting is the determining body. In addition, the budget submitted for fiscal year '25 is undoubtedly understated as reflects only a nominal increase over the current year's budget, which has now been shown to be totally lacking in believability. The Finance Committee is going to vote no. Since your vote makes absolutely no financial difference, we suggest you use the opportunity to vote no if you would like to ask the Select Board, who are the appointed authority, to take whatever steps are within their power to get back control of the situation so the town can expect to move forward on a sound basis, sound financial fundamentals. But yes, if you think it's perfectly all right in a small town for a department head to completely disregard the budget process and spend whatever he or she wants to spend. Thank you.
Any further discussion or comments, Mr. Bill?
Mark Bill, 112 Easton Street. I'd like to urge you to vote yes. This shouldn't be happening, I agree, it happened last year, it happened the year before. And I think the problem is under-budgeting, not overspending. Back when I was on the Select Board, every few months, we would get together and we would basically write off a certain amount of money spent on the ambulance. But I think the budget is an issue. This won't be the first time that we've overspent on a budget, because I've done it myself as a selectman. And I asked, I remember going to the Chair of the Finance Committee, I said, "Can we spend this money?" And he said, "No." But for some reason, I didn't get it, because we spent the money, and he was right, and I ended up at town meeting having to explain it. I say this because it seems to be a team effort. Last year, it was kind of punitive against the chief, when I stood up and defended the chief, because I thought he was getting abused. This budget went before the Select Board, the Town Administrator, and Finance Committee. Maybe they asked him about the budget, maybe they offered to give him some help. If this has been a problem, maybe that would have been a good thing, because I think if we're together as a team, we're probably better off overall. But I think that's what needs to happen. Stakes the village. I've worked with six of you personally over time. I know what kind of work you're capable of, it's good work, but I think the chief could probably use your help. I don't know if he's my kid's age, but good possibility. So I urge you to vote yes. I understand where the Finance Committee is coming from, but I think we need you guys to work together, not really send a message to the chief. I think he needs some hope and he needs some cooperation.
Come on up.
Good evening, my name's Chad Cunningham, I live at 26 Circle Drive. I watched the Finance Committee meeting on the 23rd, and to say I was disgusted with the behavior in that meeting would be the politest way I could say it. All you did was bash the chief and bash how the department's been run. You have shown very clearly, you have no idea how a fire department is run, that it's regulated by OAMS and state rules and regulations. None of you even actually said, "I don't know why our paramedics need to be trained firefighters, that won't help our insurance." Well, factually, it does help your insurance, because in Massachusetts, to be a certified fire department, your full-time firefighters shall, and that's a big word, shall, that means you have to, send them to or get them certified at national standard firefighter 1-2 levels. The Massachusetts Fire Academy does that for free. The only cost for that is that they have to be paid while they attend. It's subsidized by insurance companies, so every full-time firefighter in this state can attend it without a cost to the town or city. The things that you said and discussed were of no help whatsoever to the chief or the budget. All you did was bash him and discuss about how you could get out of his contract, what you could do about his contract, i.e., by the way, not in your purview, and also a violation of meeting laws discussing somebody's employment like that without them being notified in writing that you'll be discussing it. At no time in the hour-plus that you spoke, did you ever say, "What can we do to help the Fire Chief?" What can we, you've been invited to go speak to him, but not one of you had any, any, any thought of saying, "Maybe we can work with him, maybe we can help him." No, you just wanted to come up with a way that you get the select, to get the council to get rid of him. How does that help the town? It doesn't. Furthermore, you also then spoke about another member by name in the meeting.
So Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Cunningham, keep it to the motion and not attacking the Finance Committee, please.
Okay. Well, I just, you have concerns about their budget. I'm just wondering if your budget included fines from the state for open meeting violations. Thank you.
Mr. Randall, do you want a mic coming to you?
Let me get a chance.
You want to speak?
I do.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you very much, brother. My name is George.
My name is George Nellin, 52 Taylor. I actually watched the select, the Finance Committee meeting, it was very disgusting and very disheartening. However, I couldn't find myself to go in need with the fire chief and ask the questions that everybody's got to ask him here today, about how the budget is, is assessed. Fire chief took the ample time to explain to me, I'm very satisfied with the explanations that we received. I'm somewhat familiar with it, after 34 years on the Grand B Fire Department. I will concur that the Finance Committee doesn't have a clue about the requirements for the, for salaries and overages. I understand the concerns, yes, yes, I do. Bottom line, as I say, folks, is that the, the money that we're going to spend, it needs to be put back into the budget. Accordingly, I'm going to ask everybody to vote yes on Article 1 and yes on Article 2. I think it's very important.
Thank you. Mr. Sexton?
Glenn Sexton, 53, Amherst Street. Just in regards to the fire chief, he didn't come to the select board several weeks ago and talk to us about the current budget. And I do understand when it comes to staffing needs, when you have two staff, as you mentioned, that are out on F and L A, which is unplanned for, you don't plan for that unless you know it in advance, having a staff member injured, which you can't plan for, those things do happen. And when it comes down to that you have to staff accordingly because you have mandatory staffing needs, that definitely plays a factor. And I know for what I do as full-time in my career, that those type of positions, you have to fill the need. And you, you know, you try to plan for those things, but those type of situations come up, and they cost money, because you're paying overtime for staffing, and that, you know, when we, he talks about that, he compared this year's services to previous years, I think that says a lot. And to me, it means that we have training and adequate staffing to protect the people in Grand B, and I think that's important, and not to miss that piece of that information, because that is what, if anybody has had an ambulance come to their house, or have a fire, or lately, a lot of different accidents that have been in town, you're glad to see the fire department show up. Thank you.
Come on down from the bleachers, and then Elaine, you can come up.
Anthony Ceruvi, 3 Cedar Drive. I'd just like for everybody here to understand how the budget process works, and how each department head and the fire chief has to anticipate the number of calls based on the previous year's calls. He could possibly, not possibly anticipate 2, 3, 4, 500 more calls than the previous years. So, when the budgets are made in the winter, springtime, the, the calls are vastly higher than what they used to be. So if the calls continue, the personnel have to be paid. Tom could explain that.
Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chicagui Street. I'm here to talk as a character witness to our chief. I knew him when he started his career. We are lucky to have an honest, young, vibrant, progressive-thinking person on our fire department. We've needed it for a long time. We've seen some rough, funky stuff happen with our fire department and the leadership. Chief O'Neill deserves to be treated with the utmost respect. I'm married to a career firefighter who retired after 32 years as an officer. We do not skimp in our fire services and our safety services with the police. I really think we ought to cut him some slack, support him like we support other people in departments, and let it happen. Thank you.
Come on up, Mr. Ho.
Dennis Ho, 239 Chicagui Street, retired fire chief. To defend the chief, I'd like people to understand how EMS works. Our rig goes out of town, we have one rig. We get a second call, and we're at Bay State, we're at wherever, another community comes in. We have to pay that community a fee to come in to cover our ambulances. I saw the other day, they were out on, what, five continuous runs? We had all the neighboring communities in responding to the same calls. It's a domino effect. I don't care if you go to Belge Town, you go to South Hadley District 1, District 2, Amherst, wherever, everyone is reaching, we don't have enough staff. It's a domino effect, and every time we call somebody else in, it costs the town big monies. What I would recommend to the board, the Finance Committee, and the chief, is to sit down, lock the door, and no one get out until everyone understands each other, because there's a big lack of communication. We can't keep going this way, where one committee is bashing this guy, and that's going back and forth, back and forth, and nothing's getting done. We need to support him, he needs to understand the budget process better, and the only way he's going to understand that is by sitting down and showing him how it has to be done. A recommendation to you, chief, as chief, as I saw a deficiency occurring, I called Mr. Martin, and I let the Finance Committee know, "Hey, I'm going to be short." I can see it coming, it's, it's, the writing's on the wall. This way, they're not getting slammed, and they'll help support you. I had 100% support by the Finance Committee, but I feel it was through communication. That's what we got to do. Thank you.
So unless anybody has something different to say, I'm going to actually move the question, which is it different than what we've been hearing? Come on up.
I want to say I support the chief in everything he does, I really do. I blame the board for what I'm, what I'm about to say. If you look at the town's annual report, there are 17 people who make over $100,000 a year for an annual salary of $2 million. 17 people get $2 million in wages, okay? I blame the select board for not being tough when they negotiate union wages. What would make me very happy, and a lot of other people happy, is if you did a study with what they get paid compared to other communities, if it's...
And how is this relating to the budget?
It does relate to the budget, whether we pass it or not. I'm saying that in order to make me satisfied, to vote yes on this article, this board has to do a study, compare wages that our firemen earn with other communities. If it's, if it's comparable, then I would vote yes. That's why it's important. Thank you.
Madam Chair, to that comment, anytime that the select board, since I've been on the select board, and it's come up in regards to contracts, whether it's union, whether it's staff, we've compared it to surrounding towns to see that we're in the same type of financial situation. So that, Rich, that does go on, whether, you've seen the meeting where that happens, I can't speak for that, but that, that does happen, and it has happened, and I don't think there's anybody on this board that would, that would say different than that. So, I take offense to that, to you appointing the board out, saying that we don't do something like that, and we do, we did do something like that. And, you know, when it comes to, when it comes to contracts and things like that, we do debate, go back and forth, back and forth, as we do as fair practice. So saying that we don't is truly unfair to make that statement.
Rich, wait, you can't, there's no mic at you, people can't hear you, so if you'd like to speak, then you have to raise your hand. Come on up. Well, I think, I think the group's ready to vote.
Well, I want to respond to what he said. He said he may be with...
No, you, you can't respond tit-for-tat at town meetings, so, so I'm not going to allow you to talk.
What did you call me up for?
I'm going to call the question. In order for the motion under Article 1 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Labonte to present the motion under Article 2.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from retained earnings the sum of $95,000, excuse me, $750 for the purpose of funding the ambulance department for fiscal year '24.
Second, and discussion?
This is to cover the over-expended fiscal year 2024 ambulance budget.
Chief, do you have anything else you want to say on that? Come on up.
Mike O'Neill, Fire Chief. It's the same overtime and wages that we went over due to having the provisional, but also the per diem wages went over, because per diem medics, which are part-time firefighter medics, were covering shifts to supplement the overtime that the full-timers were not able to fill.
Are there any questions? Come on up, sir.
Mike Slater, 191 School Street, Grand B, Mass. Also, two, two quick questions. Number one, we know that this is a habitual problem. Has there been steps put in place to help the chief with this next year, so we're not back here again looking for $200,000 to do that? And then, I forget the other one. So that's what I got. Is there, is there a step for that? You know, what are we, what are we looking to do to prevent this problem from recurring again and again and again?
Yep.
I, I think as the chief noted too, he's, he's new, and he's been learning the process as far as budget is, is happening. So I would expect next year to be a little bit different, just from his point of view, again. There's certain things that come up throughout the year, and I, and I say that as I did earlier, in regards to staffing and the mandatory needs. It's, it's hard to, you kind of estimate and guesstimate that you have the right amount, and you don't know till you're, that it happens. I would suspect that if there wasn't staffing needs this, this previous year, that the budget would have been very close to being fine, if not fine.
Any further questions? Oh, come on up, Mr. ...
Stephen Alley, 31 Pleasant Street. Thank you, Madam Moderator. My question is, I'm concerned that the transfer is coming out of retained earnings. That would jeopardize our future sources of funding for capital needs. So my question is simply this, as the deficit was being discovered throughout the year, were requests made to the Finance Committee for reserve fund transfer, and if not, why not?
Do you want to answer that?
Mike O'Neill, Fire Chief. There was a letter sent to the Finance Committee on September 14th to say that we are going to go over on wages, not to the amount that unfortunately we did. There was no further, as the budget progressed, it was five or four months left of the budget where we were seeing a huge deficit going to happen.
Madam Moderator, I just want to answer Mr. Slater's question a little more. Chairman Dupre and myself, we're speaking earlier today about how to address potential deficits, not in just the fire and ambulance budget, but all budgets. So we determined that on a monthly basis, the town administrator will give a report to the board as to if there's going to be a deficit in a budget, and what the projected amount is going to be, so that during the course of the year, the select man and myself can work with a department head if need be to address any potential shortfalls in your budget.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? In order for the motion under Article 2 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and call to order the annual town meeting. Second, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. So the annual town meeting will now resume, and Mr. Libera, the Finance Committee chairman, will speak.
John Libera, speaking for the Finance Committee in our annual report to the town. How will the future of Grand B be determined? Towns in Massachusetts have some unique features that make their governance different from most other organizations. In Grand B, all the elected officials operate the departments independent of each other. In theory, each could create his or her own budget and ask the town to fund it. There's no one person or group in charge of the overall operations of our town. The select board is answerable to town voters. None of the other elected officials are answerable to the select board or to the town administrator. The process of developing the annual budget for Grand B has its own complexities and anomalies. First, the town administrator is responsible under the bylaws to prepare a balanced town budget, and then submit it to the Finance Committee. The town administrator has a detailed budget proposal from each of the general government departments, and from the departments reporting to elected officials. The administrator adjusts these as necessary to reach a balanced budget. The major anomaly here is the school department is not required to give a detailed budget to the administrator. If the administrator wants to alter the proposed budget, it's basically done blindly. The administrator's balanced budget is then submitted to the Finance Committee, which is responsible under the bylaws to develop and submit a budget to the annual town meeting. The Finance Committee can raise or lower any budget with some limitations on the school budgets. The final budget reflects the committee's judgment about the balance between the departments. Here's the second major anomaly, much larger than the first one. The Finance Committee is required to make a recommendation on all expenditures, but it has no control over the capital requests submitted by the select board in accordance with the bylaws, and with the other articles, other warrant articles, including the enterprise funds. These warrant articles passed at the May town meeting amounted to almost $3.6 million. That is larger than any budget except the school budget. That is larger than any budget except the school budget. These processes have created some complex pressures on the financial resources of Granby. The town has usually successfully managed these processes through a judicious balancing of requests and the resources available. Two major governing problems are inherent in this system. The first is that special interest groups can overwhelm a town meeting and vote for their own interests regardless of the overall needs of the town. The second is that from time to time, an extremely large amount of resources is required for a project. Think building a school, for example. That second problem can be solved by the town voters agreeing to raise property taxes. There is no solution for the first problem in the current system of town meetings. The school department is the largest department in town, and Granby's budgets for education far exceed the rest of the town's operating budgets combined. On the other hand, the budgets of general government departments have grown at a tremendous rate, outstripping the growth rate of school spending. If the only things the town had to be concerned about were paying for operating budgets, repairing roads, and replacing rolling stock, Finance Committee would not be concerned. However, the Finance Committee suggests that there is something else to consider. The Granby Junior/Senior High School building has the potential to create a virtually unsolvable problem for the town. The town might be able to afford some level of renovation to correct some of the problems with the building or to bring the building up to ADA code. However, it is highly unlikely that such limited renovations would be enough to bring the entire building up to either a mandated level or a desirable level of improvements for today's education requirements. If the town chooses to completely overhaul or replace the Junior/Senior High School building, would the town be willing to reduce the operating budgets of the schools and the general government departments to offset this massive undertaking? If not, would the town vote for the large increase in property taxes necessary to support the full cost of the project? This would be an enormous financial undertaking for a small town like Granby, even with MSBA assistance. The Finance Committee suggests that three actions need to be considered. Number one, develop a vision and strategic plan for Granby that can provide a framework for considering questions and issues that have the potential to significantly alter the way the town operates. A strategy for how to provide for the education of Granby students would be a critical part of this. Second, develop a solution to deal effectively with the expected financial crunch that will arrive with a new school building or a solution to obviate the need for a new building. Number three, determine the appropriate structures for the governance of the town and for future town meetings so that it will be possible for a balanced solution to be reached. These are clearly extremely important topics that require the wholehearted effort and endorsement of the select board. Only the select board has the authority to put together an appropriate group of townspeople to do the thinking about these issues. In conclusion, the Finance Committee does not think that this is going to happen within the very near future, but is convinced that it will happen in the foreseeable future. When it does, the town is going to be woefully unprepared. If the town starts preparing soon, Granby can find its way through this with a reasonable solution. Thank you.
The moderator will now call on Chairman Bartos of the School Committee for her report.
May I, please, for the podium?
Sure.
My name is Jennifer Bartos, and I am the Chair of the Granby School Committee. I'd like to start by expressing my gratitude to our town administrator, Chris Martin, and our former Select Board liaison, Glenn Sexton, for their collaboration throughout this challenging budget process. My thanks go to Director of Finance and Operations, Todd Dorman, and the entire district leadership team for their tireless efforts and innovative thinking that have brought our budget to its current state. I also wanted to thank the School Committee for their consistent feedback and unwavering commitment to prioritizing our students and staff. And I would like to publicly thank Mr. Sullivan, whose last day is June thirtieth, for not only his hard work on this budget, but also for his dedication and leadership over the past three years as superintendent. Please accept my gratitude for your thoughtfulness, guidance, and the extraordinary care you have taken of Granby Public Schools. I appreciate all that you have done and wish you the best in your new endeavor. Tonight, we face a budget that while increasing in dollars still results in reduced services. This is largely due to significant uncontrollable costs such as health insurance, special education services, and transportation. These rising expenses hinder our ability to maintain level services, resulting in necessary reductions in staffing and services year after year. Compounding these issues is the state's funding formula, known as the Student Opportunity Act, which fails to provide districts like Granby with the necessary resources. We continue to be classified as a minimum aid district, receiving only thirty to sixty dollars per pupil, translating to a mere twenty to forty thousand dollar increase in Chapter Seventy funding annually for a thirteen million dollar budget. We have been proactive and collaborative in our efforts to plan the fiscal year twenty-five school budget responsibly. I have been on the School Committee since 2017. A few years ago, after what seemed like a disastrous and contentious budget process, we asked when other town departments had to submit their budget to the town administrator. Since that time, we have submitted our budget by that date. This year was no exception. We submitted our budget to the town administrator and met with him and with Mr. Sexton. Additionally, we scheduled a meeting with our state representatives, Mindy Dom and Dan Carey, as well as our Senators Jake Olivera, to advocate for better funding for rural districts like ours. Furthermore, we reached out to the Finance Committee on multiple occasions, expressing our willingness to discuss our budget and the challenges we face, demonstrating our commitment to transparency and cooperation. We understand that the school budget differs from other town departments, but we have consistently tried to take steps to align with the town of Granby's processes as applicable. We fully recognize that this is not a town of Granby versus the Granby Public Schools issue, and we have been consistent in communicating that message. As an advocate for our school district, I am deeply committed to ensuring the best outcomes for our students. However, with the expiration of ESRA funds, which was part of the federal money from COVID, Granby is now in a position where we are close to teaching only the core subjects: math, science, social studies, and ELA, leaving us unable to offer a variety of opportunities that our students deserve. Despite these challenges, our students continue to achieve great things: attend excellent colleges and universities, support the community, and our staff find creative ways to meet student needs, pursue grants, and work to provide a top-notch education with less and less each year. I want to address some concerns raised by the Finance Committee. Our efforts to be transparent have been thorough, yet the Finance Committee frequently highlights the cost of running our schools, sometimes using fear tactics, like the continued suggestion to send our oldest students out of district as a cost savings measure. This lacks any factual support, as there haven't been any studies done, and could actually lead to less fiscal control and create additional expenses for things like out-of-district placements, charter schools, and potential increases in transportation. Investing in our youth is crucial, and while the school budget is indeed the largest in town and the largest employer in town, this is typical for most municipalities. The Finance Committee's statement that the total Granby school budget is thirteen million one hundred and eight dollars and one hundred and eight thousand four hundred and eleven dollars is accurate, but it fails to mention that this amount does not all come from the town. Additionally, their mention of the seven hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars school choice fund does not account for the nearly four hundred thousand we must pay out for residents attending schools in other communities. The remaining funds are used to offset our budget, a point included in the two million two hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars in offsets on the sheet we provided for tonight's meeting. Maintaining a minimal reserve is fiscally responsible, despite what the Finance Committee might suggest. The booklet also states, "The major anomaly here is the school department is not required to give a detailed budget to the administrator." While this is technically true, we have provided a detailed line item budget to the town administrator and have done so for the past three years. We have worked within the parameters that were given to us by town leadership, resulting in the budget that is being presented tonight. Despite multiple attempts by Superintendent Sullivan to engage the Finance Committee with direct emails on March fifteenth, April fourth, and April eleventh, a posted public forum on March twenty-sixth, and a public hearing on April second, there was no response. Only one member attended any of those meetings. This no response has hindered constructive dialogue. Instead of responding to our request to meet, discuss our budget, and ask questions, FinCom seemingly chose to ignore those communications and instead discuss our budget in detail in the booklet without any conversation from any representative from the school department or school committee. We thought aligning our dates would help streamline the process and prevent some of the communication issues, but here we are. As I stated previously, we recognize this is not Granby Public Schools versus the town of Granby. I wish the Finance Committee in particular would realize this as well and would choose to work with us rather than against us. It would be a much more productive approach. We all want the same things for our town, and this combative energy is not helpful. Working together will be especially important as we go through the process of bringing on our interim superintendent, Mary Jane Rickson, and then a permanent replacement for superintendent before July one, 2025. In conclusion, we have strived to be transparent and cooperative, and we are committed to working within the town's parameters. We appreciate your ongoing support and hope this additional information sheds light on our efforts to support our staff and our students while adhering to budget constraints. We seek a partnership, not an adversarial relationship, with town leadership, the Finance Committee, and the community at large. Thank you.
Jen. The moderator will now call on Ms. Dupre to present the motion under Article Twenty-four.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate five hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars to operate the municipal solid waste department. Wages, five thousand. Expenses, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Capital, seven thousand five hundred, for a total of five hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars. And that twenty thousand be raised from municipal solid waste receipts. Thirty thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars be raised from retained earnings, and five hundred thousand dollars be raised from tax levying.
Second, discussion?
This article is to fund the curbside collection program in town. It also funds the cost of taking our recyclers to the Springfield Materials Recycling Facility and taking our waste to the McNamara Transfer Station located in Springfield.
Any questions or comments? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Ms. Dupre to present the motion under Article Twenty-five.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate two hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars to operate the sewer department. Wages, eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Expenses, two hundred and five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And debt, sixty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, for a total of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars. And that two hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars be raised from sewer receipts.
Second, discussion?
This article is to fund the sewer department in town.
Any questions or further discussion? This motion must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article Twenty-six.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number thirty dash four thirty five eight zero two, Article Special Town Meeting on December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, number two generator in an amount of five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents, and retained earnings in the amount of sixty-nine thousand twenty-four dollars and twenty cents, for a total of seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding, the purpose of funding the purchase and installation of a generator at the Pleasant Street Pump Station.
Second, and discussion?
This article is to the installation of the generator at the Pleasant Street Pump Station. Now, the power that may go out, the unit is to ensure continued operation of the pump handling waste materials to avoid any potential backup or overflow in the system.
Any further questions? This motion must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Labonte to present the motion under Article Twenty-seven.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate four hundred, excuse me, four hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars to operate the ambulance department. Wages of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and four. Expenses, one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six. Capital, sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two, and debt of ninety-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars, for a total of five hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and seventeen. And that four hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars be raised from ambulance receipts, and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars be raised from retained earnings.
Second, and discussion?
This article will fund the ambulance department.
Any other questions or discussion? Come on up.
Hi, Elliot Davy, Seventeen Smith Avenue. I'm just a little confused here. The motion says the town will vote to raise and appropriate four hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, but it looks like these total to five hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars, and I'm wondering what that discrepancy is.
So the motion should say to raise and appropriate five hundred and fifty-four thousand six So we need to amend that, so I need that in writing, which, well, do you want Elliot to do it, or do you want to do it? While we're waiting for that amendment to be put in writing, do you have a question, Jen?
I have a question.
Can you come to the microphone?
Jennifer Bartos, ninety-seven Porter Street. I have a question because there's a couple of discrepancies, and I'm wondering if we should be using the booklet or these papers for the numbers. You should be using the motions.
The motions, okay.
What's in the booklet is the articles.
Okay. And so if you see a discrepancy from the paper, and it's not, it doesn't match what was in the booklet, we have to make another amendment? No. No, if it's not, if it doesn't match in the wrong way? It doesn't match in the motion. Okay, it doesn't, all right. Yeah, thanks. Yep. Well, while we're waiting for that amendment to be put in writing, which is going to change that amount to five hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars, can I have a second for the amendment? And I need a motion to stop debate on the main article to discuss the amendment. So moved? Okay, and a second? Okay, and a second? All right, so is there any discussion on the amendment or just correcting a number? Does anybody have a question?
Yeah.
All right. In order for the changed number for the amendment to pass, it must pass by a majority. So all those in favor of correcting that number, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The amendment passes unanimously. So now we go back to discussing the motion as amended. So now the motion has been corrected. And numbers, are there any other questions on the motion as amended? Come on up.
Sorry, I'm that person tonight. Jennifer Bartos, 97 Porter Street. I'm wondering, is this ambulance budget considered underfunded, or has it been adjusted to reflect anything additional so we don't have an overage?
So Jen, as we stated, we are going to have the monthly meetings and make sure that we're on target with the budget, but we won't know that until we get closer because we don't, we don't know or can't foresee what's going to happen to employees. We're going to have some out injured or FMA or anything like that. So Chief O'Neill did what we asked and what the personnel board asked, adding 3% to every line item, but we won't know until we get further down the road. So, thank you.
In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority, so all those in favor of the motion under Article 27 as amended, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion as amended passes unanimously. The moderator will now, oh, call on Mr. Libera to present Item 1 under Article 28.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 28. Move the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the ensuing year, and to carry out any vote passed under this article. Item 1, the school department. Personal services, $7,464,558. Expenses, $1,224,591. Total, $8,689,149.
Second?
Second.
Discussion on Item 1?
Okay.
In order for the motion under Item 1 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 1 passes unanimously. For the rest of the budget, we will do in sects of four. We will move all four together, and then you'll be, we will vote on each individual one as we've done at other meetings. So I'm going to call on Mr. Libera to present Items 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Before I read these, I'd like to make one comment. The Finance Committee is a bit mystified. The business with the schools was the smoothest spin in about the last 10 years. The school submitted a budget. Finance Committee took it from Mr. Martin. We had a few questions and comments in our discussions. We had no questions about the school budget, so we accepted it, and we didn't ask, I think, one question. That's basically the way it works with most every department in town. We look at it, we have some questions, we'll have some discussions about it, and then if we need to ask something of any department head, what this means or what, something happens here, we'll do that. But the school budget, we thought, was the smoothest in a long, long time, so a little mystified. Thank you. Anyway, same motion, school department. Transportation, $1,007,950. Article 3, same motion, moderator. Salary, $300. Expenses, $2,685. Total, $2,985. Article 4, same motion, selectmen. Salaries, $11,247. Personal services, $266,694. Expenses, $207,450. Capital outlay, $10,000. Total, $495,391. Article 5, same motion, Finance Committee. Expenses, $2,087.
Second for Items 2, 3, 4, and 5. Are there any questions or discussion on any of those items? Oh, okay. Why don't we start over here?
Could you please reread the Number 2, Transportation? Oh, Mike Durham, 54 Taylor Street.
Mike what?
Mike Durham, 54 Taylor Street, also on the Schools Committee. Could you please reread Budget Item Number 2, Transportation, for fiscal year 25?
This one is I then?
Yeah. One million, seven, one, on here, it's $1,007,950. Is it printed differently in the booklet?
I think it should be $1,157,950. So just a typo, I think.
It's 24th.
Right, it's one year back. We need this year's number.
So is that number wrong?
If you have a paper on in the, the book, it's just a statement.
All right, we'll amend that.
Thank you very much.
All right, so the amendment being offered to correct that number is to change it under Transportation to $1,157,950. Yes. All right. Can I have a motion to stop debate on the main article, Item Number 2? Second?
Second.
All right, so I will now open discussion to the change in the correct monetary amount. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Mike Slater, 191 School Street. With the amendment and the addition of $150,000, does that affect the end number in this year's projected budget?
No, that was apparently just the number from last year that was, this copy, or went to the.
Any further questions on the amendment? Come on up.
I was just, I was thinking, like, just give me one more second. Mr. Slater, the proposed budget, it wasn't correct number. It just didn't transfer over on the paper.
Go ahead, Elaine.
LaFleur, 235 Chicagui Street. I have two questions. The first one is, do we foresee any more typos? And who proofread? Secondly, Article 4, or Item Number 4?
Well, right now we have an amendment on the floor for Item Number 2, so we'll do another item after we take care of the amendment. So we're entertaining questions on the amendment, which again is just a corrected number. In order for the amendment to pass, it must pass by a majority, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? If you're opposed, please raise your cards. Okay, so the amendment passes by a majority. All right, Elaine, now you can ask a question.
So as Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chicagui Street, as I stated, do we need proofreaders? And are we going to have any other discussion this evening on typos?
Can you answer that if you know?
I guess we don't have any answer. My question is on Item Number 4. Can I talk about it?
Yeah, okay, I just didn't, I didn't have a chance to ask anybody if we know if there's other errors coming up. I think, I think we'll know as they come up.
Okay, wonderful. I'm, not that I'm new to this gig here in around a long time, can somebody identify for me, I believe if I did the math correctly, under Article or Item 4, salary $11,247 makes up of our Board of Selectmen who get a stipend. Am I correct? Then we've got personal services at $267,000 and expenses at $207,000. How many salaries make up those two amounts? Or how many people? I'm intrigued, and I'd like to know. Expenses, what is that? Is that like run an errand and reimburse for mileage, copy paper, toner? I guess I don't understand what that is. I work with budgets in my profession, so this is Greek to me. And what I also just, I'd like to know what makes up those salaries? Who? And in the book, there are asterisks next to some people's names that might be involved in other committees. Are they earning wages on top of what they're making? For instance, we've got Dale Clark on page 20 in the big book, is, got an asterisk next to her name. Kathy Leonard, I know Steven, who gets around, he does a lot of work, he should get paid more. Um, yes. Elaine? Yes. Excuse me, sorry. Page 20 in our book is the budget. So are we looking? I'm looking at the big book. Annual report? I guess I'm just trying to, so I don't ever have to come up here and ask this question again, is understand what makes up these line items. I know that when I'm doing a budget for multi-employer trade union, I have to account for salaries, I have to account for the copier paper, time study, mileage, everything is included. So I'm intrigued to know who makes up that 400 and a half a million dollars? Is all I'm asking.
All right.
Thank you.
We just haven't been told a sentence.
If you answered that question, would you, what makes up that?
The, under personal services, that is for, number one, it's for the town administrators, it's for the assistant town administrator, it is for the select board clerk, it is for legal services, our town council, and that's it for personal services. As for expenses, expenses is just as you said. It is for telephone, printing, copier paper, office supplies, other miscellaneous expenses that are required to operate various budgets over the course of the fiscal year. Includes a grant for the other building. And also, for example, it includes the rent that we have to pay for the other town office building.
When West Street School comes to fruition, we might save a little bit of money. Okay, do we have state-of-the-art equipment, energy efficient? I mean, I'm, I'm just really, this number's disturbing to me. It's a lot of money. I mean, I make millions of photocopies and don't blow through money like this. I, I just, you know, somebody mentioned we have 17 high salaries, while we've got how many high expenses? And can we find ways to curb that a little bit? I mean, let's be a little bit diligent on maybe using a cloud instead of a piece of paper to get information to people. I just find it ridiculous.
And any other discussion on 2, 3, 4, or 5? All right, in order for Item 2, as amended, to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 2 passes unanimously. Item 3 must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 3 passes unanimously. Item 4 must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And Item Number 5. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 5 passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera to present the motions under Items 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Thank you. Item 6, the same motion, the town accountant. Personal services, $2,500. Expenses, $91,350. Total, $93,850. Item 7, same motion, assessors. Salary, $12,885. Personal services, $46,297. Expenses, $31,650. Total, $90,832. Item 8, same motion, town treasurer. Salary, $57,875. Expenses, $10,900. Total, $68,775. Item 9, same motion, tax collector. Salary, $56,856. Personal services, $28,849. Expenses, $23,373. Total, $109,078.
Second?
Second.
Any questions on Item 6, 7, 8, or 9? Each one of those requires a majority to pass, so all those in favor of Item 6, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 6 passes unanimously. All those in favor of Item 7, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Is that opposed up there? No, okay. Number 7 passes unanimously. All those in favor of Item 8, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 8 passes unanimously. And all those in favor of Item 9, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 9 passes unanimously. Mr. Libera will now present the Items 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Thank you. Item 10, same motion, personnel board expenses, $500. Item 11, same motion, town clerk. Salary, $66,762. Personal services, $51,101. Expenses, $3,355. Total, $121,218. Item 12, same motion, board of registrars. Personal services, $2,000. Expenses, $42,575. Total, $44,575. Item 13, same motion, planner/conservation agent. Personal services, $91,244. Expenses, $1,900. Total, $93,144.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on Items 10, 11, 12, or 13? Each one of these items has to pass by a majority, so all in favor of Item 10, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 10 passes unanimously. For Item 11, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 11 passes unanimously. All those in favor of Item 12, please raise your cards. All those in favor of item 12, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 11, I'm sorry, item 12 passes unanimously. And all those in favor of item 13, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 13 passes unanimously. Mr. Libero will now present the items 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Thank you. Item 14, same motion, board of appeals. Expenses, $2,040. Item 15, same motion, public buildings. Personal services, $229,737. Expenses, $785,786. Capital outlay, $13,285. Item 16, police department. Personal services, $1,358,981. Expenses, $76,534. Capital outlay, $20,560. Total, $1,456,075. Item 17, same motion, dispatch. Personal services, $308,981. Expenses, $55,048. Total, $364,029.
Second, for items 14, 15, 16, 17. Any discussion on any of those items? Come on up, Mr. Hall.
Dennis Hall, 239 Chigbee Street. I had a question on the police budget. When the officers do roadwork, how does the money transfer happen? Because I know the services, whether it's Xfinity or wherever, whoever is billed, where does that money go and how does it get back to the policeman?
The process is as follows. A officer picks a detail, a Xfinity detail, okay? The officer gets paid based upon a contractual rate that's in the contract, currently at $62 an hour. What happens is, is they get paid their $62 an hour for the number of hours they work on the detail. We then bill the contractor, Xfinity. They pay us the bill, and we then put it back in the account that we paid the wages on. They get it as part of their normal paycheck. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you.
Any further questions? These all must pass by a majority. So for item 14, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposing? Item 14 passes unanimously. Item 15, please raise your cards if you agree. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 15 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 16, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Was that, okay. Item 16 passes by a majority. And all those in favor of item 17, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 17 passes unanimously. Mr. Libero will now present items 18 through 21.
Thank you. Item 18, the same motion, fire department. Personal services, $593,602. Expenses, $66,319. Capital outlay, $66,200. Total, $726,121. Item 19, same motion, inspections department. Personal services, $106,600. Expenses, $25,637. Total, $132,237. Item 20, same motion, preventative inspections board of health. Personal services, $14,209. Expenses, $4,020. Total, $18,229. Item 21, sealer awaits and measures. Expenses, $3,700.
Second?
Question.
Are there any questions or discussion on items 18, 19, 20, or 21? All of these must pass by a majority. So all those in favor of item 18, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 18 passes unanimously. For item 19, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? 19 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 20, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 20 passes unanimously. And for item 21, if you're in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 21. Is that 20?
20 is the last one.
So item 20 passes by a majority. So for item 21, if you are in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 21 passes unanimously. Mr. Libero will now present the motions for items 22, 23, 24, and 25.
Thank you. Item 22, same motion, emergency management expenses, $10,775. Item 23, same motion, highway department. Personal services, $457,675. Expenses, $120,250. Maintenance of roads, $372,500. Total of $950,425. Item 24, same motion, snow and ice control. Personal services, $85,847. Expenses, $59,000. Maintenance of roads, $122,000. Capital, $20,000. Total, $286,847. And item 25, same motion, cemetery. Personal services, $34,559. Expenses, $4,870. Total, $39,429.
Second? Any discussion on items 22 through 25? In order for item 22 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? 22 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 23, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 23 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 24, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 24 passes unanimously. And lastly, all those in favor of item 25, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 25 passes unanimously. Mr. Libero will now present the motion for items 26 through 29.
Thank you. Item 26, same motion, board of health. Salary, $3,328. Personal services, $46,142. Expenses, $23,984. Total, $73,454. Item 27, same motion, council on aging. Personal services, $116,986. Expenses, $4,600. Total, $121,586. Same motion, senior lunch program. Personal services, $20,794. Same motion, veteran services. Personal services, $23,690. Expenses, $51,300. Total, $74,990.
Second? Any discussion on any of the items 26, 27, 28, or 29? Each one of those items has to pass by a majority. So all those in favor of item 26, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 27, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 27 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 28, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 28 passes unanimously. And all those in favor of item 29, please raise your card. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 29 passes unanimously. Mr. Libero will now present the items 30 through 33.
Thank you. Same motion, public library. Personal services, $176,027. Expenses, $60,443. Less the grant in aid of $19,888. Net expenses being $40,555. And the total is $216,582. Item 31, same motion, historical commission expenses, $250. Item 32, same motion, retirement of debt. Principal on permanent debt, $695,400. Same motion, or interest, $420,500.
Second? Any questions on 30, 31, 32, or 33? Okay, they each need a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards for item 30. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 30 passes by a majority. All those in favor of item 31, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 31 passes unanimously. For item 32, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 32 passes unanimously. And for all those in favor of item 33, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 33 passes unanimously. Mr. Libero will now present the items 34 through 37.
Thank you. Item 34, same motion, casualty and liability insurance, $302,752. Item 35, same motion, county retirement, $1,605,085. Item 36, same motion, workers' compensation, $185,059. And item 37, same motion, unemployment compensation, $24,901.
Can I have a second? Any questions on items 34 through 37? Each must pass by a majority. So all those in favor of item 34, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 34 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 35, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 35 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 36, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Unanimously, it passes. And then for item 37, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 37 passes unanimously. Mr. Libero will now present items 38 and 39.
Thank you. Item 38, same motion, group health and life insurance, $2,022,238. Item 39, same motion, reserve fund, $130,000. The total budget, $21,881,345.
Is that the right number? Second?
Second.
So all the, any discussion on items 38 or 39? All those in favor of item 38, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 38 passes unanimously. And for all those in favor of item 39, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 39 passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Labonte to present the motion under article 29.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from capital equipment needs stabilization fund, $220,400, for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for fiscal year 2025 appropriations.
Second? End discussion?
This article is to cover the debt services on purchases that were approved by the Capital Improvement Committee in prior years.
Any questions or discussion? So in order for the motion under article 29 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion under article 29 passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Labonte to present the motion under article 30.
Madam Moderator, I vote town, transfer from free cash, $892,394.70, for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for the fiscal year 2025 appropriations.
Second? End discussion?
This article is to use free cash to reduce the tax levy.
Are there any questions or further discussion? So this requires a majority to pass. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under article 31.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 30, dash 122, dash 501, dash 000, bond premium to be applied, $11,470.32, for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for the fiscal year 2025 appropriations.
Second? End discussion?
I would the town borrow money for the East metal building project. The bids came in, and there was a bond premium per Department of Revenue regulations. This premium must be amortized over the whitefin loan to reduce the amount to be raised by the debt exclusion vote.
Any questions or discussion? In order for the motion under article 31 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under article 31 passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under article 32.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to assess the amounts raised and appropriate under these articles and warrants on the estates and personal property of the town of Granby.
Second? End discussion?
This article allows assessors to issue tax bills to taxpayers in Granby.
Any discussion or further questions? This motion must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call for a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting. And a second? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Have a good night.